Good evening, welcome to this week's meeting of the Norton Board of Swakmen. Today is Thursday, January 3rd, 2019. Director of Show, four members are present. Mr. Bramwell can't make it tonight. And we also have President, Town Manager, Michael Unitz. Pledge of allegiance, please.
We just live in the United States of America and to your public, which stands one nation, without individuals with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda, we have the license and permitting for 2019. We have three businesses that have not been voted on yet. By the way, we, as licensing authority, next year, if these, if any businesses do not have their license effective anyway for us, we are required to shut them down. These three businesses this year probably should have been shot down, but we didn't do it. But we notify these people a number of times if they had to come in and get their licenses. Unfortunately, we couldn't make it last week, and therefore, they didn't get their licenses. So we have to be a bit more stern in the future when it comes to this stuff. Okay, we have three. We have AC Rainham Holdings Incorporated, DBA Dunkin' Donuts, 103 West Main Street, for a common vicuole license. We have Rafael's Brazil, DBA Fisherman's Street, 411B Old Colony Road, for a common vicuole all alcohol, common vicuole and a live entertainment. We have New England Rodeo, 185 North Washington Street, for a common vicuole and a live entertainment. Chair, entertain a motion to approve all three licenses?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. There's one alcohol, so we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Salvo?
Yes.
I have two of them, yes. Thank you. Folks can hear us in the back of the room. I can hear the echo of the speaker. We have a new speaker back there, so you can hear what we're talking about. I don't know where it is, but it's back there somewhere. Next on the agenda, we have announcements. Mr. Salvo, you ready?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Steele?
Mr. Chairman.
Flaherty?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Unitz, ready? Okay, under appointments and resignation, we have a letter from Frances K., Frances F. Curran wanting to be appointed to the Historical Commission. Anyone have a copy of that?
Yep.
Any questions, comments? It's been a commission that has been around for a while, so it's probably good that we're getting members back on it and getting more involved. The letter states that she's been a resident of Norton for 26 years, spoken to Judge Marshall about a possible position on the Town Historical Commission, and she's very much interested in that position, Frances F. Curran. So, she had no further discussion. She entertained a motion to appoint Frances F. Curran to the Norton Historical Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? See none others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Let me get that last time. Okay. Under new business, we have, under Master General Law Chapter 61B, renotation of amendments to the P&amp;S Agreement Regarding 19 Wetter Street, Wetter Street, Law Number 11-66. Mr. Unitz?
As you know, the Blue Star Park is still going through the permitting stages, and they've received their fourth extension from the owners of the property, the Houghton Family. And so, this would, this notice has also gone to conservation, and they have voted not to be in support of not exercising rights to take the property under Master General Law Chapter 61B. And so, this again would be just reaffirming that the town is not ready to purchase that property.
How many millions do we need?
I don't know.
So we don't have? Okay. This one, item number one and number two are both basically the same, right?
Right.
You just have to re-renotification. Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Nope.
See, now, chair, entertain a motion to approve the Master General Law Chapter 61B, renotation of amendment to the P&amp;S Agreement Regarding 19 Wetter Street, Law 11-66.
And not to exercise your right to purchase.
Right.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Again, Master General Law Chapter 61A, renotation amendment to the P&amp;S Agreement Regarding 235 East Main Street, Law Number 11-32, 0 Wetter Street, Law Number 11-22, 0 Wetter Street, Law 11-25, 0 Wetter Street, Law 11-25-01, and not to exercise our option.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? See none others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we have a report pursuant to General Law Chapter 43B, Section 3, Charter of Commissions, Commission Signatures. Town clerk's here, I see. I think I saw her somewhere. Should we leave?
No, she's there.
She's there.
Want to come on up and give us some guidance, all we do now? Will someone give us some guidance?
Well, I didn't hear from council. Within 30 days of receipt of certification by the Board of Registrazers, oh, first of all, I will say, the number of certified, certifiable signatures required were 1,924. The amount certified was 1,990, so that is, within 30 days of receipt of certification by the Board of Registrazers of voters, that a petition contains sufficient valid signatures, the City Council or Board of Selectmen shall by order provide for submitting the question of adopting or revising a charter to the voters of the city or town, and for the election of a charter commission at the first regular city election, or at the first annual or biennial town meeting for the election of town offices, held on or after the 60th day following the adoption of the order. Said order shall also provide for the nomination of charter commission members who shall be nominated in accordance with this chapter. Said order shall not require the concurrence of the mayor in a city and shall not be subject to referendum. If an order of the City Council or Board of Selectmen under this section has not been adopted within the 30 days specified above, the question of adopting or revising a charter shall be submitted to the voters, and charter commission members shall be elected at the first regular city election, or at the first annual biennial town meeting for the election of town offices, held on or after the 90th day after receipt by the City Council or Board of Selectmen of certification provided for in the first sentence of this section.
Okay. So the, how many commissioners have put on the ballot, does this state?
Nine.
It does say?
For council, council, yeah, for council.
Council will have nine?
Nine, yes.
So the question putting, this, next election is April 24th?
23rd.
23rd?
Yeah. So that will be, there will be a question on the ballot, voting for this, and also the nine.
So there's two steps?
There's two steps on this election.
Two steps on the next one, trying to be clear on.
Yes, yeah.
First one is to, to vote to establish an elected commission.
Establish.
And then the second part, it would be to elect?
The nine.
Nine, well, it would be nine.
Yeah, it would be nine, yes, yes.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Those will appear on the same ballot?
Yes.
Yeah, they'll both be on April 23rd.
Yep.
And anyone that wants to run will have to get 50 signatures to get their name on the ballot, and then the top nine will be on the commission.
Now, those will be coming out, the papers will be coming out, show, right?
Monday, the 7th. I've put notice out, yes.
So then, if we put this on the ballot, then these nine people will also come in effectively?
Yes, they have to pull, they have to get 50 signatures, certify of signatures.
50-plus signatures, we all, we have to get extra.
Right, right.
If not nine, it could be 50. It's whoever wants to run.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we have, we have to vote, you'll have to elect nine, but.
Right, but 50 people can come in and pull papers for it, correct? Everybody who pulls papers and gets the 50, at least 50 certified signatures will go on the ballot.
And I think, I've said this before, and I know this because I'm the last elected town treasurer, and the last elected town clerk, and I had a choice. I could either run, I could stay on the Board of Selectmen, or I could go into those other two offices. I chose to stay here. So, the people that run for this position in, on the April 23rd ballot, they can be an elected person, they can be elected if they want to be, but if they were elected on April 23rd, let's say I ran, and I was elected on April 23rd, I can only, based on our present charter, I can only serve in one capacity. And then, one capacity would be, either be on the Charter Commission or Board of Selectmen.
Right.
And I could, I could resign from, from the Swakmen and become a Charter Commission member. So it does restrict the elected people as far as what we can, what we cannot do. As far as appointing people, anyone can, pretty much anyone else can do.
Right, right.
Okay. Anyone on the board have any questions?
Good, okay.
Great, thanks.
Be interesting, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lucia.
It's gonna be a nice, interesting election.
It's a lot of work.
Yep.
I mean, I've, I've gone through a recall position years ago. Bill Gaber sitting in the back, him and I did some, some walking and getting a lot of signatures. It's a lot of work to get that many signatures, it's a lot of work.
It was when Ray Keever was, the recall election back in 1994, about 25 years ago.
That's right.
Yep.
I was there. Okay. So, we have to take the steps to put this on the ballot, so I want to make sure it's on right here. Chair, entertain a motion to add to the next, my arthritis, add to the next election, next ballot on April 23rd, a town election on April 23rd, two additional questions. One will be, do you want to form the Charter Commission? And the second will be, do you want to elect nine persons to, to serve on the commission? So, I believe that's how we have to do it. And as far as the 60 days, we're well within the guidelines, right, Lucia? We've got plenty of time. We're well within the guidelines as far as making sure everybody's properly notified. Okay. Anyone have any questions on the board? Chair, entertain a motion to put on the April 23rd, 2019 ballot, the question of whether or not the town wants to form a town charter commission.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? See none, Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yep.
Mr. Salvo?
Yes.
And I have two of them, yes. Second question is going to be, do you want to elect nine individuals to serve as elected officials for this new elected, this new town charter? So, chair, entertain a motion to add to the ballot, the question of whether nine, nine additional positions for the Charter Commission.
So moved.
Commission, not committee, commission.
Well, we have language from council on that because it's, so people aren't confused because the nine of people aren't going to be elected if the first part of the question passes.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
First question would be there, and then, if that, obviously, if that goes through, then there will be nine people elected at the same time. And we want to stress again, it doesn't have to be just nine people pulling papers, you can have as many people as want, who want to run, can run for that position. Elect, or appointed, or whatever you are, you can all run for it if you decide to do so. Any other questions? Mr. Flaherty?
Did you second it?
I was second.
Motion by Mr. Flaherty, seconded by Mrs. Steele. Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Salvo?
Yes.
I have two of them, yes. Okay, so we'll have two more questions on that ballot.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I have a question.
Yep.
Since this possibly could be, could be a big election, could be a small election, it depends on how many people run, should we be looking at a possible another place to have a polling for that, for this election coming up, other than high school?
It's, it's too late.
It's too late. You have, you have to, you have to notify the residents of any changes, and within, what is it, six months, I believe, of polling place, so it's too late to do that.
That's why you're the clerk, and I'm just the clerk over here, so.
The question was raised because the superintendent of schools asked us if we could perhaps move it to another venue, because they were concerned about the traffic coming and going. You know, the school was in session that day, we're, hopefully, we might be able to convince them to do otherwise, but it was too late. We should, did check into it, and we were, it'd be on the timeline, we had to do it, so we have no choice. But hopefully, in the future, we'll have a place where we can do it, where it won't have an impact like that location does. It is tough to get people in and out of there. Folks in the back, your petitioners, you want to have any, anything you want to add to it? Anybody?
Thank you.
The other thing, I asked this to be, me put on the agenda, that was the appointment, our position as far as us appointing a commission?
Committee.
And, committee, I'm sorry, I have to get these things straight. Appointing a committee, in 1999, the Board of Selectmen did appoint a committee in 1999 for the year 2000. But, in the year 2010, the Board of Selectmen didn't make their first appointment until April, March of 2010. So, you know, they have to report back in the year, hopefully in that same year, 2020. So, I think we have plenty of time to worry about that, and I think at this point, we probably should just let the process go through, through the proper steps, and then, our fiscal year actually begins in July 1st, 2020, so perhaps we should look at that, if, if for any reason it doesn't, it doesn't make it to the poll, it doesn't make it to the April 23rd ballot, then we could form a commission after.
Well, you still have to technically form a committee anyways.
Yeah, we do, but we have to, we have to do it, we probably shouldn't wait until.
Right.
My, my suggestion would be wait until after, after the town meeting, May town meeting, and let's see what's going on, and then we'll figure it out from there. I don't want to cloud the issue anymore than I have to. Having two bodies doing exactly the same thing doesn't seem like the right thing to do, so we'll hold off on that. Once we, if in fact, we, we do have a positive on the April 23rd, and the commission is appointed, we'll probably have to get some kind of determination from town councilors to what, that we still have to make the appointment and all. You know, by charter, by our present charter, we are supposed to make that appointment. But I, I think we'll deal about, we'll deal with that when the time comes.
Yep.
Later on. Doesn't make sense to talk about it now. Okay. Next, we have a discussion on Route 123 road improvement project on night work.
Yeah, this I briefly mentioned at the last meeting when we were talking with the state, and we do have a meeting on next Tuesday to discuss, discuss the project again with them. Their concern is that the size of this project, if the contract is limited to doing work in between rush hours, it's really gonna cut down the amount of time, so they'll be working like 9 to 3 every day, and it will really drag the project out. So, they were hoping that the selectmen would be agreeable to allow night work on the project.
Okay, the project starts on Pine Street, right? Starts on Pine Street and goes all the way to 495.
Correct.
So, Pine Street to the hump, what we call the hump, there really isn't that many homes in that area. On the other side, though, it gets kind of congested. I'm not sure I'd be inclined to have them be working out there in the middle of the night. There are a lot of people that live down on the other side, between the, the interceptor line of the hump to 495. Can we restrict it just to one side of it?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
You know what I'm talking about?
We did bring that up at the, at the last meeting at District 5, that we thought that might be what the board would say, and they said, whatever, whatever we can get, the better.
Are there any homes over there, or is it completely?
There are, between Pine Street and the interceptor.
From the hump to the?
One, two, three, there's probably four on the right.
Yeah.
And one, two, four or five on the left. There's about nine or 10 homes involved. The difference between this section of Route 123, though, on the other side, is the width of this road right now is so wide, that the amount of improvements isn't going to be that drastic.
Yeah.
You know, because it's so wide now. On the other side, where you're dealing with that, it gets a lot tighter on, on the other side of the hump, then there's going to be a lot of work going on over there.
Yeah.
And, you know, if they had the opportunity maybe to work there during the daytime, and then swing over to the start at nighttime, maybe that would work, I don't know. Whatever we do, it's gonna be a mess, I can tell you that.
Right.
So it's gonna, it's gonna tie things up, but the faster we can get it done, the better. So, if they can only work six hours a day, it's gonna take them a long time to get it worked done.
It's not a lot of time.
So, so what are you thinking? What would the night work consist of, you know? Have they come back to us as far as what they're talking about, night work? What hours?
I'll, I'll ask them that.
Yeah, well, I, I'd want to know that. I don't want them out there at midnight, that's for sure.
Well.
It doesn't, it doesn't, I don't know if I want to get involved in having people have machinery running in front of their house. There's only nine or 10 homes, but, whatever amount there is, but.
Usually, their hours are like 7:00 PM to 5:00 AM.
Yeah.
Let's find out what they have on their mind before we take a vote on it.
Mr. Chairman, can we also ask, I mean, they must have accounted this at some point in the past, is there any kind of accommodation that they can make to the homeowners that would mitigate it for them somewhat? Is there some sort of noise proofing, or, because I'm sure they're gonna have the scorpions with the lights and, is there anything that can be done, or has been done in the past, it's worked?
I'll check, but I would doubt it.
Yeah, I think, I need just two questions. What are the hours, how can you, you know, mitigate the whole process where it doesn't have that much of an impact on the?
Right.
People that are living there, but there are a number of people that are living in that area, so we'll make sure we get that done right.
Thank you.
And how long? How long would they expect that to go?
Yeah, it'd be a two.
So we know.
I mean, it's a couple of weeks.
A couple nights, or a couple of weeks, a couple of months, that can make a difference, too.
It'll be a year.
A year at night?
I don't know about at night, but the project's gonna be going, because they'll do some work the first year, and then come back and do some more after the first winter.
I guess I would be more concerned with how long the night work would be going on, that we would have to worry about the people living there. Right, because during the daytime, who cares, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of thinking if they can work 9 to 3, they work 9 to 3, they take three hours off, and they come back and do some more. I don't know, I don't know how it works.
All I know is they told us to tell people who were getting easements from, change it from three years to five years for temporary easement, so.
Not coming down the pipe too fast. And the way we've asked them to do it is to start in 495 with the traffic lights on, and come back. It doesn't mean once they get that done, they can't come back on the Pine Street and go the other way, as opposed.
Right.
Realistically, the right way to do it would be probably to start at the hump, and come back this way, because by the time you hit the highway bond entrance down there, there's really no homes beyond that. I mean, this section here, there's no homes at all.
The biggest concern, obviously, is the sewer work, the drain work, and the water connections. And once that's done, everything else, the sidewalk work, and.
They'll find another way around Main Street for a while.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a mess. Okay, why don't you get back to us with some information, and we'll take it under consideration at that time. Anyone else have any other questions you want to ask anybody? Okay, a motion to abort my action. This is a vote to approve contract award request for quotation, review appraisal services regarding the Route 123 charter improvements and traffic signal installation project. Mr. Unitz?
This is to hire AM Appraisal Associates Incorporated to be the review appraisers on the project, and the cost is $32,062.
Are we paying for that?
Chapter 90. Keith graciously relinquished chapter 90 funds.
Why are we paying for it if that's, this is a state, state job?
We're, we're responsible for the cost of any takings.
Okay.
And engineering work, we're paying for.
Any other questions? Chair, entertain a motion to approve the RFQ to A&amp;M, AM Appraisal Associates Incorporated for the amount $32,062.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Under old business, we have a, to review and, and, and or vote on the following proposed amendments to the zoning, Norton zoning bylaws, Chapter 175 of the General Code, Article 12, wide-scale, round-mounted solar photofillactic installations. What do you got?
Okay, this is, we received the report back from the planning board. They did have their hearing on the proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw on solar, and this would allow solar by right, and also solar on cranberry bogs under the new state regulations that allows that. And the planning board did vote 501, there was one abstention, to support the article. And so, now that we have their recommendation, if you could just vote again to support Article 5 to amend.
It says here that they want to add some, a couple pieces of, some language to it. They were discussed. They just the addition of following languages. You might want to take a look at that.
They added the words "as of right."
Yep.
And they changed, or a chapter to bylaw.
Yes. I think we should have, I thought you could take a look at that.
Say that again, Bob.
Have they included that in there?
They have, they have.
That'll be, that'll be part of the new motion, anyway.
Town council reviewed it, and they did include that.
Okay, so those changes have been made. Okay. Anyone have any questions? We have the approval of the planning board, so one main, main step, right direction, so. Chair, entertain a motion to vote on the following proposed amendments to the Norton zoning bylaws, Chapter 175 of the General Code, Article 12, wide-scale, round-mounted solar photofillastic installations. Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? See none others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guess that's unanimous. Town managers, report?
Just a couple things. We've had, I just wanted to bring your attention to a couple noise complaints. One is from one resident concerned about the noise from Whole Market Foods, and Whole Market Foods did some testing on their own, and then the state went out and did testing, and found that the levels of the noise are well within the state guidelines. But with that said, Whole Market Foods is still doing whatever they can to work with the homeowner to try and address any concerns that they have.
What, when they hear the whistling noise, or?
The sound of the fans on the back of the building. And so, they're, you know, Whole Market Foods, they want to be a good neighbor, so even though they meet the guidelines that the state puts in place, they are still gonna work with that neighbor and see what they can do. And, you know, like, they called their neighbor right away, and they reached out to them, so.
Okay, yeah, this is a rough, rough time of year, anyway. I probably hear more from Wheaton this time of year than I do in the summertime, because the trees are in bloom, and, you know, knocks a lot of that noise down, but.
And just another one is the solar farm on Clap Street, and I have, that sound is a particular sound. It's not loud, but people hear it.
Oh, what makes the sound?
There's a, where the electronic mechanisms are, and so Wheaton is reaching out to the developer of the solar that runs it, and see if there's anything they can do to try and mitigate that. You'd have to go out there on a sunny day to hear it, but it's a low hum.
Like a transformer?
Right.
I have a transformer in front of my house, every once in a while, it sounds like it's like it's going to fly away.
Exactly.
Okay.
Now, are these two isolated complaints, or are these multiple people complaining about the same?
Um, Whole Market Foods is one person, and the Wheaton Solar on Clap Street is two.
Okay.
Now, are they on the same side of the street as the Palm, or are they on the other side?
Um, I think they're on the same side of the street.
I always think they'd be able to put up some kind of shrubbery or some kind of something to absorb.
Closer, my suggestion would be closer to their homes. You know, if they're putting it up right at.
Yeah.
Something right there where the equipment is, but maybe something up further, closer to their homes, too.
Let us know, keep us informed.
Okay. And just, I just wanted to report back, I know this came up at the last meeting about the assessors going into people's homes to do assessments. And, you know, they put on the town website every year when they're going to do the cyclical property data inspection program, and it, it's on the site. Anyone that goes out from the town to do the assessment on people's properties is driving a town vehicle with a town sale on it. They also have photo IDs, so if they come to your home, they will have a photo ID. And also, the company that we use to help out with the assessors, PK, they, they go out, PK evaluation group, they also have photo IDs. And also, the assessor, as you can see from some of these emails, like the one on November 5th, 9:59 AM, they email the police department, let them know that the cyclical inspection program is beginning. They give the name of the person from PK evaluation group, and they also give the make, model, year, and registration of the vehicle that that person is driving. So, if anyone from the assessors comes to anyone's house and, or if they'll be driving a town car, so they should know that they're from the town. And if it's someone else from the company, they can call the police department if they don't believe the ID that the people show them, and they can let them know that that person is there representing the town. Also, when they go out, if someone is at home, they'll hang the card on their door, letting them know they were out there, and ask to be contacted so they can come back and do their work.
Now, they're not hitting every home, right, in Norton? They're not, they're not going to go inside every house in the town of Norton?
No.
They, they can choose.
Right, pick areas.
Or if someone's pulled a permit, maybe they, they go in and do their work.
Well, they'll do that anytime someone pulls a permit, they will go and inspect that. But during this program, they pick, you know, they'll go out to the homes so they can do comparisons to see how the prop, home should be evaluated.
And what are we paying for the service? We're paying a lot of money on that one for this.
Yeah, I, I don't remember off the top of my head how much it costs.
Norton Board of Assessors Office is required by the Department of Revenue Bureau of Local Assessments to conduct a data inspection program for all properties at least once every 10 years. So we have representatives from PK valuation group, who are hired by the towns, perform the townwide property inspection program. It began in May 2018. And like you said, they have photos and identification. We're not doing this because we want to, we're doing it because we have to, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
How long, how long, like, how long does this last?
How long does it take them to complete the whole program? I don't know, I'll have to ask Denise.
By June, somewhere.
Oh, yeah. Be done this year.
Any questions? Any else?
Nope.
So I can report in mail? Mr. Steele?
I don't know, I don't have anything.
I do have something. Proud grandfather again for number six. Here's my Christmas present. Very excited.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. And new gray hair.
I had something, I forget. What happens on this date 67 years ago?
Well, Kimball's birthday.
That's right, Peter.
Yeah.
Thank you, Peter. What day of the week was I born, Peter? What day of the week was I born?
Thursday, January 25th, 2022, you were born on Thursday.
I don't know. I'll have to go back and look. I thought my mother said Wednesday, but I'm not sure. Anyway.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, I don't know who made this for me, but I, I decided I wasn't going to wear it tonight, so. I thought it might distract a few people.
Someday I might bring in the toilet Mr. Kimball made for me, but.
Yeah.
I got to wait till I really need it.
You're getting closer. No doubt about it. Okay, I have nothing else, so on the select report in mail. Under warrants and minutes, I have payroll warrant PR 19-13 for the week ended December 15, 2018. Warrant dated December 20, 2018. One million, 362,913.55.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? See any others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes. Motion to approve invoice warrant AP 19-25 dated December 20, 2018, the amount of 697,396.66.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? See any others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And we have an invoice warrant AP 19-26 dated December 27, 2018, in the amount of 1,52,169.1.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? See any others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. We have some minutes to look at, review from December 13th, everyone have a chance to read them over?
Yeah.
There is one thing in there, Mike, that reminded me of, we're going to have Bob Sullivan come in from Comcast? And have him talk about the HD peg, finding out how soon we can get that installed in Norton. Chairman, a motion to approve the December 13, 2018 minutes as written.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? See any others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Well, our next meeting is on the 10th, a week from today, we're actually trying to get back on, on track. We missed last week. And it's going to be a joint meeting with the school committee, starting at 6:30 at the, is that middle school?
Middle school.
Yeah, middle school. But that's next Thursday.
Middle school, right, Bob?
Yep. So I, I got a couple of things I, I wrote down for the joint meeting, and obviously we want, we want to talk about the warrant for the spring, for the January, January town, special town meeting we're having. There's only, what, five articles, I think?
Right.
Five. Look at the financial look of where, I think you've got that on your, your list already. The, talk about the town hall and the COA, where we are with that. East and West Main Street projects, talk about that, but that is going to have an impact on the school system, too, and their buses and how they're going to have to deal with that crap. And, an update also on the Blue Star Industrial Park. Come up with, just give them an update on what, what's going on with that. On the Campbell House, I know we're, we're trying to get that thing taken down now, have you heard back from the district, district commission?
Yeah, they're not, they don't have.
So we're going to have to come up with some money to take down the Campbell House and the, and the barn behind it. And while we're talking, the school committee, I think we might want to talk to them about future uses of that property. And one thing that I was driving by today, and it occurred to me, was widen the driveway that's coming out of there now. Perhaps we should hold off and take a look, and maybe we could use that property?
Yeah.
To have another egress, and also some additional parking. When things get crazy over there, they, they don't have a place to park. So, we can talk about that, maybe come up with a plan on how we can make that. We've got the, you know, the playground, and we've got the, the Tricentennial Park there, we've got to touch those, but there will be some other space that.
Yep.
We might be able to utilize. And if you guys think of anything else, in the meantime, just let Mike know so we can.
There's something else I like to talk about, but I don't know if this is the right time to bring it up at a meeting, but.
Is it with the school committee or not?
Yeah, with the school committee.
Yeah.
We really need to do something in the morning with getting traffic through the town, and it's the both schools that are affecting 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning now. It's getting longer and longer. I don't know what we can do, but we, we just, we need to find a way to get traffic through the town. And I don't think that one lady can do it all.
It's going to get worse, too.
Yeah, absolutely, especially with construction starting.
Construction is going to be a mess.
I don't know what finances it would cost to, you know, have an officer out there for 45 minutes or an hour, I'm sure you have to pay him a four-hour minimum for how it can be worked out, but I think we need to try to address it for the future.
The other thing, bring up scheduling at the high school anyways, professional days on election days, and it's only two days a year, so hopefully somehow they can. And the teachers can be in the building, and they could have a professional day in the building.
Yeah, okay, put that on there, too. You guys think of anything else? Just let us know and we'll add it to the, to our agenda. They're going to have their own things they want to talk about, too, so, you know, we'll try to get as much as we can done. Okay, is there anything else to come before the board this evening? If not, I declare under general laws, chapter 30A, section 21A, subsection A3, that the purpose of the executive session will be to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining concerning scene to be. Because of discussion of the strategy, the open session could compromise the purpose of the executive session, and the board will not return to open session at the conclusion of the open session.
A move that the board can to executive session under general laws, chapter 30A, 20A3, for the purpose and reasons declared by the chairman and with the board, to not return to open session thereafter.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Flaherty. Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Hello? Yes, also. Thank you. Thanks, Andy.
Thanks, Chairman.